Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to call to order the Banbury County School District Board of Trustees meeting to order. Today is Monday. The date is October 2nd, 2023, and the time is 6 o'clock PM. We are down to item number two on the agenda, which is Pledge of Allegiance in a Moment of Silence, so if you will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could just have a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you. We are on item number three of the agenda, which is Approval of the Agenda. And Board members, you've had an opportunity to receive and review the agenda prior to tonight's meeting. So what is the pleasure with regards to approval of the agenda?
I agree.
Yes?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any discussion? Here or none? If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. We are down to item number four, which is Approval of the Minutes for the September 11th, 2023 meeting. And this too, again, Board members, you've had an opportunity to receive and review these meeting minutes prior to tonight's meeting. So what is the pleasure of the Board with regards to approval of these minutes for that meeting?
At this time, I would like to make a motion. It will be approved in minutes of the board meeting on September 11th, 2023. This is a present.
Second. We have a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any discussion? Here or none? If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. We are now down to item number five on the agenda, which is School Reports. And I will turn that over to Dr. Brown.
Madam Chair, Board Members, I would like to say that we have a special guest with us tonight. It's Ms. Lindsay Tumer, the Assistant Principal at DeMarcola Elementary School. Lindsay is at USC completing her certification program in superintendentcy, and she is doing her practicum this semester under myself. So with the Board's approval, I'm going to allow Lindsay to present tonight. It's one of her activities this requires part of her practicum. She'll be doing the school reports and the athletic report.
Sounds great, does it?
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I'll be looking at the school reports. All Board members have a copy of each school report in your packet. Would you please look at it at your leisure? If you have any questions, we ask that you please contact each school principal by email or telephone if you have questions.
Okay. All right.
There is one thing that I'm going to add. So, Ms. Tumer, a couple of the schools included South Carolina ready scores. They were embargoed for the elementary schools until late last month. The high schools are still embargoed. The embargo will not live until October the 10th. Therefore, I wanted to explain why you didn't have one of those for every school. But coming back in November, that will be your principals' report. They'll be presenting their school report cards and ready's and going over that with the Board. So just wanted to explain that.
Well, we appreciate you explaining that, and I personally figured there was a rationale behind it, and you would let us know, so.
Same.
Didn't, you know, I didn't think anything of it other than I knew there was an explanation. Okay, well, we appreciate that very much, Ms. Lindsay Tumer.
All right. And then the next item on the agenda is the athletic reports. Again, Mr. Tumer has also included the report in your packet, but I would ask that you take notice to the second page where we want to make recognition for our individual awards. We'd like to recognize Mr. Terrance Hinton from DeMarcola High School, who is recognized as the Arnsberg Touchdown Defensive Player of the Week for Week 1 of the season. And then we'd like to recognize Mr. Jamie Dine from Danberg Earhart High School, who is recognized as the Arnsberg Touchdown Defensive Player of the Week for Week 3 of the season. And also, we'd like to recognize Coach Cory Crosby, who will be coaching in the North-South Football Game in Merrill Beach the first week of December.
Wow, great. Thank you.
And again, any questions that you may have on anything else that's under report, please contact Mr. Tumer's email.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tumer. And we welcome you to our board meeting and appreciate you standing up to provide us with that information, and we wish nothing but success to you in your endeavor. And I know you do think that. Thank you. Next up is item number seven, which is the Student Staff Recognition and Superintendent's Report. And I will again turn that over to Dr. Brown.
Good evening, everyone, again.
Good evening.
I would like to start tonight because we have another very prestigious guest amongst us, and I would like to recognize her right after that. As you know, last month, I told you we would be selecting Teachers of the Year for each school, and I'm going to go ahead and name them right at this time. For Richard Carroll Elementary School, Ms. Linda Warren was named Teacher of the Year. For Banberg Earhart Middle School, Ms. Kristen Jensen. For Banberg Earhart High School, Ms. Morgan Busby. For DeMarcola Elementary School, Ms. Feniki Jenkins. DeMarcola Middle School, Dr. Brenda Hughes. And for DeMarcola High School, Jennifer Sanders. So those were the six candidates selected from each school. Once a candidate is selected and named as Teacher of the Year for their school, they then have the opportunity to compete for District Teacher of the Year. They have to submit a resume, they have to submit an application, basically, and they also have to go through an out-of-district panel interview. So the panel members are all from different counties, not affiliated or not employed by our school district. Each candidate is ranked and rated with their interview and their packet that they submit. And I am proud tonight to introduce our board to our District Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jennifer Anderson Anderson, from DeMarcola High School. Ms. Anderson, it is Jennifer Sanders. I was trying to say DeMarcola High School, and I think it's Sanders, I'm so sorry. But this is Ms. Sanders, and she does an awesome job, clearly worthy of this honor. And we want to thank you for the hard work that you do every day. Her kids love her. We had an assembly where we, Dr. Simmons had this high school come for an assembly to present this award to Ms. Sanders. And if I heard one child yell out, "We love you, Ms. Sanders," the entire DeMarcola High School was yelling that out. So, great job. Thank you. And she will, Ms. Sanders will go on now to represent the district at the state level and be our State Teacher of the Year. Stay separate. We love you, we wish you good luck. Thank you. All right. In your package, you have two, our student enrollment data. Ms. Tucker furnishes that. You can see from 2021, 2022, and 2023. We're down just a little bit, but that fluctuates by the day. Also, I mentioned earlier when Ms. Tumer was talking about the school report cards. Just know that coming back in November, we will present all school report cards as well as the district's report card. Just waiting on that embargo to lift, so we can do all of them at one time. Also, in your package, you have a copy of a news article. You might have seen Banbury County School District on several news outlets in the past week or two. It was announced by the federal government and by the state. South Carolina was one of five states in the nation to receive like $10 million in grants focused to help students with disabilities get college and career-ready and for post-school outcomes. Out of the five states, 20 states received the grants, excuse me, but within each state, five districts are selected to pilot this. Banbury County School District was selected as one of the five in the state of South Carolina to pilot this program. So we'll be working closely with the State Department and begin piloting this program either in the, we'll begin in the spring or for next full year. So we're very excited for that.
Before you go on, just for the public, because it has been out there about this grant that you're referring to, but can you elaborate a little bit more as to, we know what the grant will provide, but if you could provide a little bit more information for the viewers?
I can, but we have not received all the finite details from this state. So what this means is students with disabilities, we, they have a low employment rate for after high school. They have a low post-secondary education. In other words, going to school after high school to further their education. But not just that, getting a job. Some of your more moderate severe students have great difficulty getting employed after they leave us after high school. So what this grant will entail is it will be divided among school districts and community agencies like Able South Carolina, Vote Rehab, and those agencies to help these individuals with disabilities continue their education after high school or else get willful employment after high school. So that's, the money will be spent for us to cooperate, collaborate, and partner with those agencies and to develop programs for students that leads to increased employment rates or continuing education rates amongst that population.
Great. That's fantastic. I appreciate that.
All right. Also, in your board packet, we received a letter, and you have a copy of the letter already, from the chairperson of McCormick County School Awards, asking the board to consider writing to our legislators to modify current state law to exempt school districts from paying tax, sales taxes. And as you know, schools receive revenue through taxation, so they do not feel that it's fair for districts to pay taxes for money gotten from taxes. So I'm wanting to bring this to Madam Chair and the board's attention tonight and ask if there's any further directives for Ms. Moody or myself, but also to just let the board know what this entail. And of course, it went to Ms. Walker and myself, and just wanted each of you to have a copy of what they're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, what we'll do is communicate more with our representatives down at the State House. Between myself and you, we'll communicate a little bit more and be able to report back.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I was wondering if we, if the school district did not pay state, I mean sales tax, would that be throughout the entire state or just in Banbury County?
One answer.
If the state, the law were changed, right?
I'm sorry, is that a considered?
If the law were changed as people from McCormick have proposed. That means that regardless of what we purchase, we would not pay sales tax. It doesn't matter where, what city or county it came from.
Correct. They won't expect that.
Does anybody know what the effect of that would be on Banbury County's budget?
I think Divine could probably give us the rough estimate as far as coming from this whole package.
It's definitely something that has to be explored a little bit more. That's a really good question.
I don't really feel ready to take a yes or no statement on this yet. I'd like more information, please.
Sounds good. All right. Do you have any additional information to report under item number seven, or are we moving to item number eight?
Moving on to item number eight.
All right, on to item number eight.
All right. So tonight, I'm bringing to you a request for, two requests for local board-approved courses. The first one's at Banberg Earhart High School for College and Career Preparation 1, to be offered as an elective and to be offered as a half a credit towards graduation. And of course, they've included the target population in the rationale for students to obtain a deeper understanding of what it's meant to be ready for college. And then it gives you the whole units that would be taught during this course and during the course of that nine weeks. So asking for board approval for that course description. And I'll go ahead and do the second one, if that's okay, unless you want to vote independently, Ms. Walker.
I know you can do them both.
The second one comes to us from DeMarcola Middle School, gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs, which is Europe. Ms. Patricia Goldsmith would like to be able to offer this as an elective course at DeMarcola Middle School, having Europe as an elective course in the master schedule. So she too has offered a, for those of you not familiar with Europe, a brief description there of that.
Is it safe to confirm that you support these?
I do. Yes, ma'am.
Any comments by the board members?
Madam Chair, please, we're going to jump back the next few years.
They will go into effect tomorrow once the board approves.
Tomorrow?
Mm-hmm. And upon board approval of the local board.
We'll have teachers?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Madam Chairman, I think it's especially good that at the middle school, they're thinking about exposing those middle school students to some of the things that are expected for them or from them in the future. I think that's a very good beginning for them to try in the future.
Any other board members? I actually think it's an excellent idea. I was very pleased with the information that we received on this. It's definitely needed. Just kudos to those involved that made the decision to bring this forward. I think it's an excellent idea. And with that being said, if a board member wants to place these in a motion for approval, I'm willing to hear it.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I need that the board endorse and adopt the creation of the College and Career Preparation 1 class and also the gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs year up class.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. We are down to item number nine, which is Requests for Out-of-State Overnight Trips. And I'll turn that over to Dr. Brown, but before you speak, Board members, there was a change sitting at your, your chair in front of you. If you could swap out the old for the corrected version of that, and then we'll turn that over to you.
Very good. All right. So you have two requests for overnight trips, and I'm going to do these together because they both involve both DeMarcola High Schools and Banberg Earhart High Schools ROTC program. They're requesting, and you may remember that last month, we had an approval for Banberg Earhart High Schools junior ROTC program. However, there has been a change. When I first asked for approval for that trip, the U.S. Army, we had anticipated they would pay for travel and lodging. However, we ran into an issue with the meals. They are not covering all of the meals. So both DeMarcola High Schools junior ROTC and Banberg Earhart High Schools ROTC are going to the same place for the same raider, National Raider Challenge. November the 2nd, we're aboard at Fort Knox, Kentucky. U.S. Army will provide the transportation and the lodging and part of the meals. But what we are asking the board tonight is approve that each one of our ROTC units, companies? Regiments receive $600 each to help pay for the cost of the meals of the chaperones and the students. So it will be a total of $1,200 for both of our ROTC programs to attend this. Out of the district funds. And we have attached it as a roster of the students and the chaperones to attend.
I want this first, should I report this?
Yes, she has.
Thank you.
I'll just check the federal program and check the.
I'm sorry.
I do have a question, but let's go ahead and hold on, and when we get to the discussion, we can talk about it. Or no, 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 I changed, changed that because I think it needs to be talked about. The question that I have with these requests is, and, and Board members, if you are not in agreement or not even on the same page, by all means, please feel free to speak up. But I saw where they're requesting that the district pay $600 each, and I guess my question is whether or not there is any funding that could pay for their meals in their entirety instead of having to have the family to figure out where they're going to get the additional money to pay for this. That's my question, whether or not we could afford to do that for them.
I checked with Divine on the $1,200 amount. I could certainly go get her down here to check on the total amount. She is aware, and I feel pretty sure there is, but I would rather our CFO confirm that.
And I know that she's very busy doing something, so let me just say for the board members, does anybody have a problem with that, if we are able to do that?
I think it's important. We can go.
And I'm, I'm just saying that if a board member doesn't have a problem, we could move to, if someone wants to move to place this, you know, in the form of a motion, that we approve it, we can approve it as is with the option if, if the funding is available to pay for all of it. And that, at that point, would be the decision of the Finance Director.
And while we're discussing, while I have Dr. Simmons here tonight and Mr. Omar here, who's more familiar with the junior ROTC program, just want to make sure that that would not mess up with the funding that we get for, from the U.S. Army. Okay? Thank you.
The only thing, the question I have is, would this open, you know, open the door for other groups, you know, requesting funds for stuff like this instead of raising the money? And I know we've, you know, most of them we get, they do, you know, raise their own money. So I'm assuming that's what they were doing for the balance of this, they were going to raise the money, or, or they were going to?
I think it was coming out of pocket of the parents.
Pocket of the parents, or?
Pocket of the parents.
Students, yeah. Fundraise.
Or they're going to fundraise?
They are going to fundraise. I'm sorry?
Yeah.
I'm watching y'all. I've been listening. The total amount, Ms. Carter? The estimated was $1,148, and of course, you know, they were asking for $600, so total $1,200. The board is tentatively asking if we have the funds to support it, all of it.
Yes.
So, the $82 is being paid by?
See, it looks like the meals are $82 a piece.
They're predicting the meals cost $1,200.
So they're going to have to pay for $40 something if we pay $600. Because that would be half of that.
Madam Chair? Paying the difference between the amount they can raise and the amount it costs, would that not?
I believe that's what they're asking for.
Okay. Okay. I thought they were asking for.
In the $600.
They anticipated paying $600 each.
Mr. Hires does raise a point about that.
Perhaps what we could do is say, well, that the district would be able to pay all the $20 for things like that. That way, every child is paying separately. Would that keep somebody from attending?
I, I don't know. I don't know if that would keep anyone from attending if they are not able to meet their, their goal.
And again, it's not that I don't think this is a worthy trip, and, you know, I'm just, you know, wondering how we'll take this going forward. Because we seem to get a, you know, requests for trips about every board meeting. I don't know, I don't think we want to, you know, make a precedence out of paying the full, right, the, the full cost. I mean, I don't mind paying some, but, you know, let them raise some money. I know all the teams I've been associated with in the past, they, that's what they've done, if not raised all the money.
Okay, well.
Just my two cents.
That's your two, I'm just, I'm just one of nine, and I guess my heart just goes out because, you know, of what it is and also the fact that it's out of state. But what, what does, what does the board want to do on the form if you, if you want to have some more talk about this, or you want to just, what, what do you want to do? You've heard, you've heard the 15 cents here and the 15 cents here and the 15 cents over there.
The difference between what they were already giving and what the anticipate they'd be costing them?
Looks like it'll be another $500 each. I mean, talking about $1,148. So talking about $150, almost $2,300, and we're giving them $1,200.
So, out of, out of.
$1,100.
Yeah. Out of curiosity, on November 3rd, you know, I'm looking at zero for breakfast, zero for lunch, a 25 for dinner. What, who's feeding them? Is someone's feeding them for breakfast and lunch on that particular day? Or is that?
The military's covering that portion.
They're going to cover that portion?
Yes, some of the meals, but not all of the meals.
Okay, some of them.
If I can, I, I think the, the military's got the MREs. It looks like down at the bottom, it says pizza and Gatorade and the barracks with a double asterisk, and I guess they pay $7 for the pizza and the, and then the breakfast sandwiches, the triple asterisk, $10. $7 for dinner.
Anybody want to make a motion? Any other thoughts?
My general could be, or to estimate meal cost on that one day is that.
That's times two.
What?
That's times two.
But that's the total cost for the entire trip?
Where each, you got that cost for each high school's regimen.
So that's the balance that's not covered?
No.
No, that's the total. We're going to pay $600.
So this is, we're going to go and their estimate, this will cost them $82 probably for meals. So 14 times 82 is $1,100, $82. So you're just asking for $600, it'll cover half of that.
Madam Chair, at this time, I, after from listening to everybody, I think I'm ready to make a motion that we support the DeMarcola and the Banberg Earhart ROTC for our, paying the $600.
Okay. For each?
For each, for each.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Motion on the floor, a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it and the motion carries. We are down to item number 10 on the agenda, which is, um, the first reading of the Bamberg County School District new policy, section J.
Yes, ma'am. And we, if you might recall, um, last month or the month before, I alerted the board that there was current legislation that had been passed, um, for schools to maintain life-saving medications. They changed the title of this and to maintain those medications on schools. And that includes EpiPiance for students with severe allergies, other life-saving things such as, um, we have students with conditions that require immediate medication should they have seizures or anything like that. But also Narkey is included in this. So the Sacon School Board Association has furnished districts with a model policy. It is required that we have such a policy in our board policy. So I'll bring to you tonight for first reading, policy J L C D B that covers the use of life-saving medications and our maintaining those on school campuses.
All right. You have had the opportunity, board members, to receive this prior to tonight's meeting and you heard Dr. Brown. What's the pleasure of the board with regards to the first reading of a new policy under section J?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, at this time, I move that we accept the first reading of use of life-saving medications, J L C D B.
Motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Yes.
In section it said that we will develop a plan to authorize the district schools to maintain this apply undetonated life-saving medicine. I think I read elsewhere that parents had to provide medicine. Is that correct?
It depends. There are some medications that physicians write prescriptions for and it comes straight to us and parents maintain the medications at home and school and maintains a separate set of medications. It depends on what the medication is for. But in most instances, that is correct. The parents get the prescriptions filled and provide it to the schools.
One thing probably just asked that we might want to do is make sure that if the medication is about to expire.
We do. We have procedures and policies in place. They have, the nurses have to follow to monitor that.
Okay.
And we need to have a chip.
But we would be buying, the district would be buying the medicine, right?
No, 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 no. Students' health plans cover all their medications. And Narkey was provided by the state.
Okay. Is there a problem?
I don't know. Yes, every child's covered by some type of health plan or state assistance.
Okay.
It's in no expense to the district.
Okay. We don't have the money.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor of approval of, or approving the first reading of the new policy, um, lettered J L C D B, section J, use of life-saving medications, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it and the motion carries. We are down to number 11, which is the monthly financial report. And Ms. Furr is, um, in her office attending to some extremely important duties. I'm not really sure if Dr. Brown has anything to say, but I can say that, you know, all of you have had an opportunity to receive and review the report prior to tonight's meeting. And if there's nothing else further that you want to offer, um, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I make a motion that we receive the, um, financial report as submitted by Ms. Furr.
Second. We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it and the motion carries. And we are now down to item number 12, which is visitors' comments. And I don't see that anyone has signed up for any visitors' comments. But I would like to just make a comment on behalf of the board again. The board, and I'm speaking on behalf of the board, since we, um, we're just so proud of having a Denmark Over High School teacher be named Teacher of the Year for our county district. And that just goes to show you that we're doing something right and so are you, Dr. Simmons. That means you're doing something right. So you deserve some recognition and kudos too. So I'd like to give him a round of applause. That he's doing what it takes to, you know, um, make this happen, as is all of our administrators at our schools. And we will just continue to watch this process go through and, you know, if we have a Bamberg County Teacher of the Year from the state level, I think I'm going to jump up and down for yours. So, but we do appreciate, um, her efforts as well as yours. We, we really do.
Madam Chair, she did a good state teaching. Maybe she'll give us a ride in the BMW.
Yeah, I could see, I could see all nine of us getting in there. We'd be hanging off the side of there and everything else. Okay. Next on the agenda is item number 13, which is executive session. What's the pleasure of the board with regards to going into executive session?
Madam Chair, at this time, I move that we go into executive session.
All right. Motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it and the motion carries. And we will now move into executive session to discuss, A, employment personnel, item number one, personnel recommendations for hire. Item number two, personnel recommendations for resignation. And B, discussion of release of students. We will now move into executive session. Thank you all. Okay, board members, I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we come back out of executive session at this time.
Second. We have a motion on the floor, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor of moving out of executive session back into open session, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it and the motion carries. We are down to number fourteen on the agenda, which is action on executive session items if needed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the personnel recommendation for hire for employee one A, accept the recommendation for resignation for employee two A, and accept the student transfer request for student B A.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it and the motion carries. We are down to item number fifteen on the agenda, which is to adjourn. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair. I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting at this time.
We have a motion on the floor that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.